It being seven P M. I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is December fifth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. I'll start with a roll call from the far end, please.
Lee J. Feldman, contract planner with S M P D C.
Marty Kane.
James Lowery.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I'm the chairman. And we have on the agenda tonight, we have approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes from November fourteenth. We have a space for public comment. We have a public hearing on Trotter paving site plan review application. Under pending business, we have three items. We have Glencoe Heights subdivision preliminary plan. We have Trotter paving site plan review application. And we have Sunset Place Division preliminary plan application and Clearview Estates subdivision. After that, we have planners business.
Make a motion, we accept the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane to accept as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. So approval of the minutes of November fourteenth.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green to accept the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have four in favor and one abstention.
Who's the abstention? Jamie?
Jamie. He was not in the meeting that day. Now is the time for public comment. If anybody from the public wants to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda. Please step up to the microphone. Seeing the mad rush for nobody to get up there, we will move right along. It is seven oh three. I'm opening the Trotter paving site plan review application public hearing. The applicant, Anthony Trotter, is proposing to construct a six thousand five hundred ninety-two square foot four bay commercial garage on Heavy Hammer Lane. The parcel is in tax map for lot twenty-three C in the A R D zone. The property owner is B D F Holdings LLC. And Jonathan Malloy P E of Saint Germain is the applicant's engineer. Is anybody here with you, Anthony? Us, please. If anybody from the public has a question, these are the gentlemen that you need to present it to, and they will be able to answer it, hopefully. So I can see that nobody has any questions. Then I, at seven oh four, I will end the public hearing. We will move right on. The first item of business is Glencoe Heights, a subdivision preliminary plan. The applicant, the applicant is proposing a thirteen lot subdivision on Jasper Lane, tax map one lot eighteen. The parcel is fifty-one point four nine acres in the R three and R four zone. The plan includes thirteen single family homes. The project will have nine hundred plus or minus feet of reconstructed roadway and an additional two thousand plus or minus of new road. Colleen Campbell is the property owner. Dempsey LLC is the applicant represented by Thomas Gillis.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This last time we were here. The only thing that kept our application from being complete was the traffic study. And the wildlife inventory, we have done both of those. And also I gave Lee J. Our permit by rule for the stream crossing, so we have that from the state as well.
Is your speaker on?
Excuse me?
Yes, it's on.
It's on? Oh, I'm sorry.
Speak right into it, Tom.
Okay.
Yep.
Want me to repeat that or? Okay. So I guess we're at the complete stage and we wish you push us into the final stage and we can get working on those plans as well. The only thing that in the your statement, it's not two thousand feet of new road, it's like nine hundred.
Well, we had, we had two amounts. We had nine hundred and then we had another two thousand.
No, nine hundred, the two thousand was a carryover when we had that long
Okay.
cul-de-sac in the beginning, so we shrunk it down to eleven hundred. Geez, I can't even read my own plan. Somehow I got barked off, so that may or may not need to be corrected.
So that's, that's going to be eleven hundred feet of?
Yeah, roughly eleven hundred feet.
Thank you.
All the test bits were done and are suitable. We meet setbacks, we meet well radiuses. Even through, and these are just suggested locations for houses, they're not definite. But I put them on there just to show you that there's enough room to get a thirty by sixty home in there. And some of these are smaller square ranches that are built before, but they, everything fits in there pretty nice. I am not proposing two houses on lot seven. Let me just clear that up because it shows two. The, that Highland there. I'd like to really place the house there. But I'll have to get a wetlands crossing, but I just wanted to show an alternate location. To show it can be built without the wetlands crossing. It would be another minor impact, but it's, it's a better place to put the house, that's all. Any questions?
I have one question. Were you able to resolve the issue with your? I don't know if she's in a butter or not with the, where your road was passed.
Yes, in the in the submittal packet, you'll see the subdivision plan showing her lot and her leach field. We're going to be well away from it.
Okay.
There should be no problem with that. It'll probably be thirty feet or so. At least one. It shows the septic system on the dial plan. And again, we're going to be well away from it. I can guarantee that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, was there any other wetland impacts associated with the stream crossing?
No, and we have the permit from the state.
Right, so solely the stream?
It was the stream and I'm pretty sure I sent the application in. If not, I can get it to you, but it was a very minor permit by rule.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody satisfied?
I am.
Okay, we need, we need to deem the application complete. And then we need to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make a motion and we deem the application complete.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth to deem the application complete. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Now, on to a public hearing.
Can I ask a question real quick before we start?
Absolutely.
To the applicant?
Sure.
Can you give us a quick rundown on the traffic study or traffic numbers?
The, the the main word in there was negligible. So, you know, they did a full-blown study. And he said, there's really no impact. It was like twelve cars. I, I I'm not a traffic engineer, and I think those things are very dry reading. But I looked at the, his main recommendation that it's a negligible impact. So.
Okay, thank.
When's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is the nineteenth.
Of January?
Of, no, of December.
December.
Oh, we have a meeting in two weeks.
So you'll do a public hearing on the nineteenth?
It's, I would suggest it might be fairly close for Ann to be able to get notification out. We can set it for the nineteenth, but I mean, we're right on the two-week limit, so.
I will hand deliver them to anyone that wants them.
Well, and I do think we can talk offline, but I think there's still a lot of cleanup and work that we need to get done for the final plan set.
Yes, oh, yes.
So.
That's definite, but I just want to get the engineers involved now.
Yep.
And get the plan set done.
That would make it January second.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a tough day.
Does, does January?
Second.
January second.
I'll be in Buffalo, New York, hoping it's not snowing.
Wait, you're going to go to Buffalo in January and hope it's not snowing?
My niece picked the worst day to get married, January first.
Okay.
But the engineer can show up. I don't have to.
The, the meeting after that would, well, yeah.
Let's, let's stick with the second.
Yeah, we can stay with the second and you can have your representative show up.
Okay, I have to drive back.
Is that good, Lee J. The second?
Yes.
Okay.
I already turned one meeting down with another town because I wanted to ease into the new year, but I'm with you folks.
Are you going to try the nineteenth or?
No, we'll, we're going to try the second, January second.
So I move, we schedule a public hearing for January second.
Two thousand twenty-four.
Two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Motion made, made by James. I know what his name is. Motion made by Jamie Lowery, seconded by Susan Roth for a public hearing on January second, two thousand twenty-four. I should, I should not hesitate when I do that, should I?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Great.
We'll look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
No, I was, I think we're good.
The next item is Trotter paving site plan review application. The applicant, Anthony Trotter, is proposing to construct a six thousand five hundred ninety-two square foot four bay commercial garage on Heavy Hammer Lane. The parcel is tax map for lot twenty-three C in the A R D zone. The property owner is B D F Holdings LLC and Jonathan Malloy P E of Saint Germain is the applicant's engineer. We had a sidewalk last Saturday. Everything looked, everything looked fine to us in terms of.
So these plans reflect the discussion we have.
It does. Okay.
I think so.
We had a great sidewalk. I was impressed. Ms. Roth and gentlemen, what's your opinion?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Nothing's been changed?
There were some additional parking added for vehicle storage.
Okay. I think we knew about that Saturday, didn't we?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, but nothing has changed since Saturday.
Nope.
That's good.
All right.
So I move, we find the application complete?
We've already deemed it complete. That's why we had the sidewalk.
Okay.
Add the sidewalk in the public hearing. Now we have to decide whether or not we want to accept it.
Oh, then I, I'm sorry, out of order, but I deem that I move that we accept the application.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Susan.
I move that we accept the application.
Approve, approve the application.
Okay. Application.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green to approve the application. Any discussion?
Yeah, and I may have missed it at the last meeting. Was, were stormwater calculations done for this? Were they, was it all part of the overall subdivision?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they allotted the, an amount of impervious based on their initial application, so we abided by that. It's, it's tied into their.
You stayed under whatever their assumption was.
Yep, yep, good.
Okay, I believe, Jamie, the findings that I have for the app, for the approval of the application site, the D E P permit is part of the, part of the findings.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. All site plan review applications shall be evaluated, approved, approved with conditions or denied based upon the following findings of fact. The application was submitted to the planning board October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three by Saint Germain Associates and John Malloy P E representing the applicant. The planning board reviewed the application on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three and found the application complete. During deliberation, the board asked several questions in regards to sprinkling the building and the landscaping buffers. The planning board set a date of December second at nine A M. For the sidewalk and December fifth for the public hearing. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds the performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of the ordinance. All of the performance standards have been met. Item B, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The project is subject to main site location of Development Act Order J L twenty-two, one ninety-four dash thirty-nine dash A dash N slash L dash twenty-two, one ninety-four dash T E dash eight dash N issued May ninth, two thousand and five. And no transfer order.
A N O transfer.
I'm sorry.
A N O transfer.
A N O transfer. Okay, A N O transfer order. One L twenty-two, one ninety-four dash thirty-nine dash I dash T slash L dash twenty-two, one ninety-four dash T E dash J dash T issued May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. This parcel is pending approval.
That shouldn't be in there.
And I thought the IRS had a weird way of labeling things.
The, the pending approvals should not be in there. That this parcel was approved. Stormwater D P site location permits.
Okay, thank you. The proposed project does not create unreasonably an unreasonable impact on public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The project has been reviewed by town staff. No issues have been raised that would be of concern to public safety and welfare of the neighborhood, and the applicant plans to sprinkle the buildings for fire protection. Item D, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The project is subject to D E P permitting onsite location, onsite location of development, and all standards have been met. Item E, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. See item B mentioned above, the applicant has submitted the stormwater management design prepared by Sebaggo Technics in April of two thousand twenty-three. Item F, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. The development has previously been reviewed and approved for Heavy Hammer Lane as proposed by B D F Holdings. Item G, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs or the community. The site was previously reviewed and approved for these impacts as B D F Holdings. The site has previously been approved for commercial uses, including warehouses and campground uses. Item H, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. The development is a four bay garage for the storage of commercial vehicles. The applicant has not indicated that there would be any operations that would produce the above noted nuisances. Item I, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on the municipal government. The use is proposed on a private drive and does not require any municipal support from the departments. Based upon the findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the site plan review request with the following conditions: compliance with all written materials submitted as part of this application. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this date, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Somebody want to make them, oh, we already have a motion to approve.
You have a motion on the table.
Any, any discussion about the motion or the findings of fact? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations. We will get a signed copy of this out to you.
You, John, John, as those are plans to be signed?
Okay. Can I just leave him with you?
Yeah.
I guess I can assume that everybody else is here for the next item. Because nobody was here for anything else.
Okey-dokey.
Have a good one.
It'd be a good use. It's going to be a good use. Yeah, yeah, with everything else that's coming.
Oh, yes.
Right in, yes.
I think Ben was prescient when he decided he wanted to set the whole thing up.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, next item. Sunset Place subdivision preliminary plan application and Clearview Estates subdivision amendment. The applicant, Michael Thomas, is proposing to develop a six lot subdivision on parcels tax map seventeen lots fourteen, fourteen, and a portion of map nine lot three. The project will consist of five single-family homes known as Sunset Place subdivision as well as a ten-unit condominium community on lot six, known as Sunset Community Condominiums. The proposed lot will be accessed by a proposed public roadway across one eighty-nine Clearview Drive, lot fourteen Clearview Estates, tax map seventeen lot fourteen, fourteen. Since access to this project will be across lot fourteen Clearview Estates, tax map seventeen lot fourteen, fourteen, an amendment to the Clearview Estates subdivision will be required as part of this view review. Andrew Morrow of B H two M is the applicant's engineer. And you must be Mr. Morrow. And I say that. Oh, you're Michael, I'm sorry. I know, I know, Mr. Reed.
Make sure you speak in on the mic, please.
Is it on?
It is on.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I am Bruce Reed. I'm here, attorney for the applicant. Andy Morrow is to my left and Michael Thomas, the owner of the developer, is to my right. Like you, I was, I rolled into the parking lot tonight and I thought, wow, that's a lot of cars. And you're right, it looks like most of the folks are here for us, which is fine. But I guess at the top, I just want to emphasize from the applicant's perspective and you've got a board here with, get your planner and your town attorney is waiting on this as well, but tonight we're here for a determination of completeness. There will be plenty of opportunity for public comment as we go along. I would imagine we'll have at least one public hearing on this. We anticipate that, and there have been other public forums, but without any disrespect to anyone here in the room, tonight, we are here expecting to have a discussion with the board, the three of us. And you make a determination as to whether our application is complete, and as you just did for the prior applicant, set a public hearing. If you need another site walk, we've had one. If you want another one, perfectly understandable, but I just wanted to sort of set the tone for the folks in the room. We are expecting and and welcoming their comments, but we're not expecting to have a full-blown public hearing tonight.
No, we will, we will not be.
Thank you. I just wanted to put that out there. And, and also in terms of the delay in our, we've, we had our application here before you it's been two months, maybe?
Yeah.
You know, but in the interim, I've been able to talk with your town attorney, meet with your town manager and meet with your road commissioner, all about the fact that our cul-de-sac that's on Michael's property. Our entrance, as you know, to this project is, Andy will, will articulate here a little bit more detail in a moment, comes off of Michael's property. We, the cul-de-sac that Clearview Estates Drive ends on is on his property. And as you may or may not remember, there was a consent decree a long time ago that required then the Dubois's who had developed Clearview Estates to engage with the town and make right the as-built portion of Clearview Estates Drive, so. Long story short, the paved portion, the drive was not put in where it was shown on the plans. And this resulted in a consent decree with Dubois, which I guess the board has seen. Anyway, I need to flesh out the details of that with Leah and with your town manager and road commissioner. At this point, Michael is prepared to pay for the expense of surveying, which is a little bit of a I told Michael it not necessarily, would necessarily fall to him legally, but we're going to do that and have that deed work take place. Fortunately for, I think, everybody, Leah, Rachel, and I discussed this, and there is no need to go to another town meeting to get approval. This is a consent decree that the town engaged in years ago that can be used in lieu of a town meeting, so this adjustment of the road situation is going to happen without the necessity of a public meeting of a, of a town meeting vote. But we, I just wanted to let you know that was the reason for our delay and the reason we're here. We'll be going hand in glove with our application.
Has that been done?
It's about to be done.
It's in the progress.
The, the reason I ask is that it is, it is a violation of the original permit, and as such, based on what we have heard from the Board of Selectment, we cannot hear the application. We have to have that violation resolved before we move forward. So I, I'm going to ask the board to consider tabling this application until that is done.
Well, that's the first I've heard of that from anybody. And I, as I said, I've been talking with your town attorney and Keith and Terry. So this is news to us that this has to be, this has been out there for thirty years, Rich. I mean.
I understand the problem, but nonetheless, based on what we have been told by the Selectmen, we are not allowed to hear an applicant if there is an existing violation. That has to get cleared up, which means you have to get into that consent decree and turn that land over to the town, which is what the original consent decree called for.
Called for from the original developer, from Dubois, not from us. And I, this is, there's no pending notice of violation that's been issued by your code officer. I've never heard a peep out of the Selectmen or, as I say, your town manager about this, so you're catching me completely off guard.
I'm surprised the town manager does know about it.
Well, we're here with offering to, to correct this violation ourselves. Michael happens to own a lot where the cul-de-sac is. Now, this isn't the only violation, Mr. Chairman.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, you go off his property and, and not such as our property where there's a discrepancy in the paved surface, it keeps it going. So if you want to make a real point of this, you might want to go down and look at the folks in the audience here, many of whom have homes that their land is, is in a paved, you know, town right of way. So I'm not suggesting you should do that at all, but I am suggesting that it's, it's not appropriate to make us wait until this is completely resolved. It's going to go hand in glove with our application. It's something we're offering to do at our expense.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you, can you clarify to us what the process that you guys are, what, what you, you're already starting to do to rectify the, or you know, or to, to make whole the consent decree?
From our perspective, it's extremely simple, and Andy can speak to this. They have to do what's called a meets and bounds description of the, the land to be conveyed, to be exchange of deeds. Town will exchange to us and we will exchange to the town, so that if the end result is the paved service is in what everyone expects to be owned. So that work, Andy, is probably you know, you've given us a quote for what it's going to cost and you can advise. You know, you've given us a quote for what it's gonna cost and you can advise.
Will, will that be part of the amended subdivision plan?
I think it should be, yeah. That's why I say this, we're intending to go hand in glove with us. And we, to your point, we have to amend the Clearview Estates original subdivision plan, that's why you have this. Odd looking two-part process, it's only because. The cul-de-sac from the original subdivision is now going to have a spur off of it. When we're done, that's the rea, but you're, to your point, Mr. Lowry, um, yeah. It makes perfect sense to have them both go uh, together, not only our spur, but also correcting the discrepancy. And this is. The answer is it doesn't, it's not that heavy uplifting, we, we have to get the legal description. And exchange deeds, I draft the deeds, town approves them, and they're signed by the selectmen and by us.
So Rich, I guess my take would be that, I mean. It's all, it's all gonna be part of the process. And ultimately where. I mean, this is a, a historic issue that's going on. And I would feel very comfortable moving forward. With the application with the, the very, you know, known contingent. That this issue is gonna be resolved through the process.
Okay.
And we wouldn't have a problem with you making it a contingency, a specific, we're, we're prepared to do it, so.
Lee J, your thoughts?
Uh, thanks, um, well, I think, I, I, I think there's certainly two ways to deal with it, one is, um. Rich certainly um, did bring up the issue of the fact that there is a, um, in fact, I keep it, I keep it in my. Ordinance, um. Um, that was done under chapter two, um, business ordinances. Um, it says standard conditions on licenses, the license issued must be posted. No, that's not it. Take that back, I got too many things floating around in here, um. There it is. Issues, uh, issues of licenses permits relative to properties with a violation. It is the policy of the town of Arundel. That no license or permit shall be issued to any applicant relative to the improvement you. Improvement use or occupation of any property. Where violation of any federal, state or local statutes, laws, ordinances or regulations have been identified. Unless and until such violation has been either removed or abated. A permit or a variance has been obtained from the appropriate board or a consent agreement has been executed by the Board of Selectment. I think it's that last sentence that Rich is hanging on with, um, a consent agreement has been executed by the Board of Selectment. This was put into effect. Um, it was amended, the last time it was amended was July of nineteen ninety-four. Um, and has been in effect since, now. The other side of it, and I think it's certainly something for the board to deliberate and discuss. Is that? All the preliminary approval gets the applicant. Is the idea to move forward to the next step, which would be final review and approval, it gets him no formal approvals. So, um, heading in what Jamie was suggesting. Is that the board could condition this preliminary approval on not coming back. For final approval until that issue has been completely rectified. Um, which includes having the consent agreement or whatever needs to be executed with the Board of Selectmen and the plans revised to address that issue. Um, so I'm playing both ends in the middle for you, but I think those are choices that, that you folks as the board need to deliberate and decide how you wanna handle it.
Lee J, could I just ask you a, a question along those lines?
Yeah.
I don't think, we have a consent decree in place already for this matter. To me, it's a simple matter of having the selectmen do their part on the consent decree and we do our part.
Sure.
And we exchange deeds, so I don't, there's not a need for another consent decree, I just wonder.
I, I, I don't disagree with you on that, Bruce, except that, um, we need to get that finalized.
No, no, I agree.
Yeah.
And I just wanna add. That we're not the only ones who don't have the road in the right place and are affected by this consent decree, okay? So people who have pulled permits over the years, it's been many years. May have had the same issue and it was never raised before, we're not raising it.
And, and, and I under, I understand what you're saying and it, it does. It, it can look as if it is unfair, but any of the people that have had to pull permits for whatever reason.
Yep.
Were not in front of the planning board to have those permits, they were building permits from the codes enforcement, you're looking to change. The original permit that was, that was issued and that's what's, for me, that's what causes the problem because we have the selectmen saying you can't do it.
It's an easy fix.
And I think Jamie has.
Yeah.
The right idea in terms of how to go about fixing that.
We're, we're, we're on board with that, yep.
It's just, we can, we can proceed from here, but before you get to the stage of having the final application deemed complete and a public hearing. That. You've gotta straighten it out with the selectmen to get it taken care of.
Was that your intent, Mr. Lowry? I, I, I'm hoping we can be deemed complete tonight. And have.
We cannot be deemed complete. This item will prevent that completion.
I, I disagree with that, um. We have a complete application, if you make our later approval as your planner was just saying.
If we deem the application complete tonight, what's to prevent us from voting on it and denying the application?
Public hearing, sidewalk, um, you have a number of other steps you have to follow in your ordinance. This is a determination of completeness, just yes, you guys have shown us enough to tick off the boxes in the application checklist. Which we've done, if this issue of the road is a bar to approval.
Which, which is, which is why I bring up the point of the selectmen saying, you can't, you can't hear somebody. Who's got a, a, a problem with the original application that has to get resolved beforehand. Before we proceed forward, that issue needs to be resolved. And if, if we say to you, okay, we will deem this the preliminary application. When you come for the final application, you have to bring. Proof that that issue has been resolved, we've done, we do that all the time, we allow people to say, yes, you can continue going forward. When we get to the point of the final. Plan, that issue has to be resolved.
I think we're, we, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's, to me, that's pretty much what Jamie said, we'll make it a condition of going forward to the, to the final.
Okay, that's fine, I just don't want us to have a roadblock to getting a public hearing set. And progressing down to the next phase, that's all.
Is that what you were aiming for, Jamie? Did I misunderstand?
Well. I'll try and clarify it again, my intent was to. Allow the process to move forward. With. With the understanding and, and my presumption that. The subdivision plan that they have proposed. Will be modified before it gets a preliminary approval.
Yep.
That, and reflect the new right of way.
Location.
Yep.
But I think Lee J was saying we can, we can. Offer a preliminary approval. Is that correct?
Determination.
So, so, yeah, I mean, let's go back and let's look at the steps of the process. The application, um, would need to be found complete tonight. Or at some point, that's step one, find it complete, then set the date for the public hearing, excuse me, and or a sidewalk. That's, now remember, we're not a site plan for this, this is a subdivision, so it's a two-step process, so you find the application complete. You, um, set the date for the public hearing. We go through that, then you're looking at consideration of approval of the preliminary application at that point. And it would be at that point where I think a condition of approval would be established. Um, that would say you need to have that corrected. Um, I can't speak for the applicants, but I think they're hearing loud and clear that that is a major stumbling block for them. And I would assume that that plan is gonna come back. For preliminary approval with the corrected changes at that point. Then you can move to the final review and approval, which would be a separate. Meeting and process.
If I understand you, we're, we're, we're doing this in two parts, we're doing the. Uh, Sunset Place subdivision preliminary plan. The Clearview Estates subdivision. Are you saying that we would deem that complete and hold a public hearing on it?
That, that's, that's a great question because it is two separate situations, if you will, because the Clearview piece. Um, is an amendment to that previously approved plan. But I would try to run that process simultaneously, even though. If it were just an amended subdivision, it would be a one-step process, but where there's a stu, two-step process for Sunset. I would just continue to run them parallel so that they're not getting any final approvals tonight or at the next meeting. They're not gonna get a final amended approval until Sunset gets whatever you folks decide to do with that. Whether it's approved, deny it.
So if we deem it complete tonight, we can hold a public hearing in. On January second, related to. To both, to both, sure, yeah.
And, and the assumption on my part. Is that they would become, that, I'm looking at Bruce and his team, but. That they're gonna need to jump on this issue and probably be able to submit revised plans between now and then that address that issue.
Yep.
And if they don't?
And I think you, then, then at that point, I think. You probably wanna consider a tabling action until that issue is addressed.
Okay.
I'll, 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 I'll understand, yep.
Okay, it, it accomplishes the same thing, table, table it now, table it later, I'm fine with the, the recommendation to go through. I just wanna make sure in my head. I don't think we've ever tried to do two different permits at the same time.
It, it's a complicated situation, um, it's just a matter of. Weaving our way through this process.
Well, and I personally wanna make sure we do them at the same time.
Yes.
And not.
Yes.
Uh, separate them in any way, because otherwise. The process gets even more confusing.
We would have to do them at the same time, but we're gonna have to have separate votes on each one of the issues, correct, correct.
But it makes perfect sense, if you, if we're going to put our access road off the cul-de-sac. And there's a problem with the location of it, they should be done at the same time.
So just for clarity, and it doesn't appear to. But have you guys confirmed that, that the, where the pavement is outside of the right of way, it only affects? Mr. Thomas's property?
Well, for, for our subdivision, yes. And she get off our property, we're not, we can't give a thing.
So Jamie.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to go.
Yeah.
Farther in other places of Clearview Estates. Right. Right.
No, um, I'm sad, I think they clarified that.
Okay, so I, I guess the first thing we need to do is, is have a motion to declare the Clearview Estates subdivision complete. Yes.
Just the application.
Just the application.
To the chair.
Yes, wha, what we have to do on both, so we can do, it doesn't matter if we do sub, Sunset Place first or if we do Clearview Estates first. But we have to, we have to have motions on both of them to declare them complete.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
I think we should wait until we actually see. It on paper. Because we got the holidays coming up and everything else. And. People are gonna be running short. And I think we should wait until we have actually see it black and white. Who's selectmen or whatever? And I don't think tonight is the night.
You look confused, Paul. Oh, I. And then that'll be a final, cause it's already in.
You're, you're not, you're not approving anything tonight, you're only, you would only be finding the application complete.
But it's not.
Right, well, no, it actually, it is, because remember, the definition of a complete application means. We have enough information to make a decision, we can always reject the application.
Yeah, it's, it's somewhat confusing because it's, it's preliminary and final and completeness and, yeah, we're, we're still only at the completeness stage and. And as you've heard me, as Rich just said, as you've heard me say, number of times, I mean, they could submit. Not these folks, but anybody could submit a deed and it doesn't even describe that piece of property, but it's been submitted. And then it's time for the board and for staff to do all the due diligence work, we're only at that point of. Did they submit everything in the checklist that needed to be submitted?
So speaking of the checklist, any, I saw that you, um, I think it was maybe timber harvesting mark is non-applicable. Any, any waivers being requested?
So in our application, there was kind of, we, we didn't request any app, any waivers. Uh, there were three items we kind of mentioned as items we'd like to discuss. In submitting those, when you guys look through Lee J's comments, you'll see that. Uh, the fire chief made it pretty clear, he would like to see sprinklers in all of the homes. The new sprinklers, so it's no longer looking for an alternative there. Uh, the other two issues, uh, I understand talking from Lee J really aren't waivable requirements, so. The applicant's not looking to, could do anything with those, the way the, the plans have been presented and submitted. We submitted them assuming none of those waivers or considerations would be granted, so. The way they've been submitted to you, there's no waivers requested and we're not looking, uh, for any.
So what's the best way to word this, Lee J, if we're going to?
Well, you wouldn't be putting any conditions on anything tonight, because you're only, the, you'd make two motions for completeness, a motion to find. The amended subdivision application for Clearview complete and set the date for the public hearing. And a motion to find Sunset.
Sunset Place.
Sunset Place, um, application complete and set a date for the public hearing. Only for the preliminary review. We, we haven't even gotten into, you know, your whole deliberation on the, on the actual application itself yet.
Yep, we need motions.
So I move we accept the application for an amended subdivision plan of Clearview Estates as complete.
Right.
And we accept the application for the subdivision plan of Sunset Place as complete.
So I'll, I'll, I'll ask Lee J's question, is it accepted or deemed complete?
Deemed.
Deemed complete, okay.
And Paul, will you the second on that?
I'll second.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna make you second, I thought I heard a second, but. Okay.
Motion by Jamie Lowry, seconded by Paul Green. To deem Clearview Estates subdivision complete and Sunset Place subdivision. Uh, preliminary plans complete. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Four in favor, one opposed. The next step is a public hearing. And I, I suggest January second.
Yes, I move that we make. January second the date of both public hearings for Sunset Place and Clearview Estates.
Okay.
Good question, I, I, I know you, you said another public hearing for an applicant before us, is that right?
Yep.
But we should be ready.
What's that? Well, I guess that would be my question to the board, I guess maybe directed to Lee J is, is. When would you need a submission in advance of that January second public hearing and what exactly would you be looking for? I know when we submitted the application, we had. Our sheet one of the plans was our subdivision plan and our amended subdivision plan, we had discussions with Anne about. Separating those. And our amended subdivision plan, we had discussions with Anne about separating those and doing a separate. One plan, that is the amended subdivision of Lot fourteen in the Clearview Estate subdivision. And then a sec, another plan that would be the subdivision plan, so our intent is to have. Two plans for you guys.
In terms of the filing requirement would be December nineteenth. Two weeks before the meeting.
What, what would the next public hearing date be?
January sixteenth.
January sixteen.
If with the board's blessing, I think we'd be better off.
If you, if you want to do the sixteenth, not a problem.
The public as well, give everybody a little more time.
So that submission would be on.
January second would be the submission deadline.
Much more manageable.
Yeah, same with us on our, on our end for paperwork. I think for everybody's case, that makes the most sense.
Yep.
Okay, so we, we had a motion, but I don't believe we had a second.
We didn't, so I'm gonna.
So if you would amend your motion.
Yes, I'll amend my emotion to, motion to January sixteenth for a public hearing. On Sunset Place and Clearview Estates.
I'll second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowery, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Look forward to seeing you on that date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I, well, if you.
I, I would suggest if you've got issues at this point, um, get them to me.
But we can deal with it on this.
Okay, yes. And if you want to talk to me about any of the stuff, you can do that.
Okay.
I was gonna say, well, because he was talking about not engaging the public, he says that's what I did last time. So really, his comments were directed to me. Oh yeah, he wants to show up as many times as he possibly can at this point.
Sure, oh, well, uh, probably the best person to ask is the planner, but no, go ahead, go, go ahead now, if I can answer it, I will. Well, he's, he's going to bring all the specifics on the sixteen.
I don't know.
And so he's got to get a lot of ducks in it, in the row before that's clarified, but if you have questions. About this, well, so all, you and all your neighbors should get together and put. Together your questions and be loaded for bear on January sixteenth. Well, so that again, so now it's, now we've given him preliminary. Well, it doesn't change anything, it's, it just means he can continue to pla- plan. That's right, and he still has a lot of things to do. But I think that this gentleman is correct and Rich is correct. Get everybody together and get all your questions ready, get all your facts included and be ready to. Ask them on the sixteenth, so there's, there's no, everybody's prepared. Because, you know. So, but what must have happened originally is there wasn't clarity. In, in some aspects of when Clearview Estates, I don't know the, all the facts, but. There, there was obviously an opening for them to try to create this development based upon. His ownership of the land and whatever the deeds were, so he's. Well, so Lee Jay would be, Lee Jay? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. She wants to show to you. Yeah.
I'm just.
I know.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's all, that's all part of the stuff.
No, no, I understand.
Get the updated plan.
Like I said, I don't think.
Cause I can't answer, I don't really know.
We will. Before we approve anything, it's gonna have to be in progress.
Yeah, but you're in the same way.
Oh yeah. Oh yeah, no, it's. Which one is that?
Well, that's, that was with, uh.
Is that the one right now?
So, but so now we're on to the sixteen, right?
That kind of stuff is definitely tricky.
Well, I totally agree.
You know, where it all falls out, especially on a public vote. I think we'll, I think we'll make sure that they, they have it all straight before we allow them to do much more. And again, where this is. They, where this is a preliminary first, we've got a lot of leave.
So that's really for them, oh, I don't have. Yeah, I mean, it's just pretty sloppy.
The new generation.
Generation.
They're still marching their own ground. So here, so I really had.
Has somebody, anybody? Uh, so, applied for Susan's position?
We should ask, ask Lee Jay at the end of the meeting. Or is this the end of the meeting?
Uh, my neighbor, do you have? Understands land values and body of goods and stuff like that. I told him. But I don't know if Keith is interviewing.
What was she doing that's? What was her job, Kyle? That was conflict.
I don't know, I, maybe she didn't, I just, um, derive, uh, the. Benefits of I've been on the board, the P E M hopes in the beginning when she joined.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, that was my. Okay, there you go.
Mister Chairman?
Uh, Rich.
Do we want to finish up and you can talk after that?
Okay, next, next item is the planner's report.
Yeah. Okay, um, two items I have on here for you, um, I think. Some of you, if not all of you, know that the select board would like to have a joint workshop. With you folks, um, on the nineteenth at six o'clock. Um, the discussion is workforce housing. Um, I don't know any more than that as far as the depth of the conversation, or is it just about? You know, is that something we should consider or how, how to go about it? I just, I don't know any more than that. I was asked to make sure you folks were aware that it's probably the nineteenth that we're gonna meet at six P M right here before our regular meeting. Um, the other thing is that what you have in front of you tonight. Um, is another, um, possible amendment for the zoning ordinance for this year's, um, town meeting. It's, um, Article five point seven of the zoning ordinance. Um, as you recall, last year, because it didn't need town meeting approval, we made some amendments to the, um, subdivision regulations regarding. Residential developments, um, going forward, um, having, um, only sprinkler systems and doing away with cisterns and. Um, fire ponds. These amendments are in the zoning ordinance, quite frankly. Um, I don't know why they were ever in the zoning ordinance to begin with, but that's another matter. Um, so what I'm proposing is to change the language in there to eliminate. The, um, cistern and fire pond, um. Requirements or regulations for residential development. Um, but continuing to allow it, um, for commercial development, provided it is. Privately maintained and not something that the town would have to take over or maintain. So, and, and that's simply, um, the cistern, um, issue is because there's clearly boring gallons of water. Um, when you're talking a commercial building that might be needed versus, um, a sprinkler system. Remember, the sprinkler systems are not meant to, um, put fires out, they're meant to. Contain them and get people out of the house, um, in time. Um, so with that, um, I'd suggest take a look at that. Um, see if it reads the way, um, you think it ought to read, and we'll certainly have. An opportunity to discuss it with all the other amendments that we're looking at. That's all I have.
Question on the, uh, commercial one?
Yep.
They, they install it, they maintain it.
Yep.
Is there an overview of it? Does it get inspected back then?
Uh, great question, I don't know that there's any language in there now that indicates that they do or don't. Well, now the town is maintaining, right.
They, if they take it over. Come upon them to do it. Then is there some kind of?
Because, no. My, my initial, my initial response would be no, um, and that's the reason why we're trying to take them off the books from the public.
Could we put something in there that requires them on a biannual basis to have it inspected and give the report to the fire chief? And let him determine if it needs to be fixed?
We, I, I suppose so, um. We could certainly add language to that effect, I mean, that. Again, quite frankly, I don't think it belongs in the zoning ordinance to begin with, but it's there, so. We could modify the language to require that, yes.
Per- personally, I, I just, I, my, my honest opinion, if we're going to require sprinklers in residential. We should require sprinklers in non-residential. The purpose of the sprinkler is to allow people to get out.
Right. Well, there are certainly, uh, uh, not to interrupt, I'm sorry, um, but there are certainly, um. Commercial types of uses that require sprinklers regardless.
Mm-hmm.
Um, high hazard uses, for example, would require sprinklers. Um, even if you had a public water system right outside. Yeah.
People.
Yeah, um. Correct. Multiple users, um, we've, we've reviewed several of those before, you know, where there's small. Condominium type units or small rental units for various types of users. You know, they're gonna be required to have two-hour rated walls, we don't get into that in the zoning ordinance, they're gonna be required to have sprinkler systems. Um, and the like, so. Um, yeah, I mean.
So you've said a couple times, you know, why it's in there.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to move this through baby steps, if you will, um. First is to make it conform with subdivision regulations, which basically say residential uses. All sprinkler, period, uh, and the commercial uses. One thing I did shy away from in there is, is keeping fire ponds in there, but. Um, moving everything to cisterns, poly, poly, I want to say poly, um, carbonate. Um, ponds, which are, you know, all plastic. Um.
Liners.
Liners, double walled, um. They're very protective, they're much less apt to leak over time.
Along with Paul about, um, inspections and things like that. Let's not put it in if ultimately that isn't where it belongs. Why, why enter it in a place that we're only gonna have to take it out again? So, but I agree with you, I think there should be some inspection process. Although I think the fire chief is gonna be loathe to get involved because he's already. So busy.
Staffing is difficult these days.
I'm not, I'm not saying the fire chief should be the one doing the inspection.
They could do it, the, the, the owner of the property could do it and.
Right, and give the report to the fire chief.
Yes. Yeah, I can, I can build in language like that.
Well, maybe we gotta get there. They want it to be inspected. As long as they don't have to maintain them and, and rebuild them and all that, they may not have a problem.
I mean, there are private company, companies that certify. You know, sprinkler systems and all kinds of things in commercial buildings, and there's no reason. Why we can't require, uh, building owners.
Yep.
To get a certification.
Yeah, I can.
Necessarily on the town's dime.
Certainly will take a crack at language.
I know my church has a company that comes out every year and does the fire inspection, make sure everything works.
Yep. Yep. I'll put that in.
So you need our John Hancock's?
I do, don't leave tonight without signing stuff, um, I actually have a.
Stuff you want to call the meeting, I move that we, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Oh, hang on, Marty has a comment.
Sorry, Marty.
Did you get anybody? Has anybody applied for Susan's position?
Not at this time.
Have they even posted it?
Um. Posted it, I'm not sure, um that's the town manager's responsibility.
He normally has a list of people that are willing to serve in various capacities.
Right now, I think he's only had one, um and we've been um. Trying to see who might be out there and requesting to be on the board.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, I called somebody.
Okay.
Who might be suitable, so.
Have them talk with Keith.
I I haven't, I that's what I said, call Keith. So, okay, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn does not require a vote, we are done.
You know, sometimes advocates make the process more difficult than.